zoning commission. Call the meeting to order for city council and let the record show all members are present. And then.
And I'll call the meeting to order for the planning and zoning commission and all members are present.
Perfect, alright, so tonight we're going to receive a presentation and discuss possible development of property located at 102 boulevard Barnett Boulevard. And Mr. Stevens, you're gonna, you're gonna take it away.
Thank you, Mary, members of the council and planning and zoning commission, thank you all for being here tonight. I know this isn't a regular meeting for you all, but thank you for, for taking the time to be here tonight. And you all may be wondering, what the heck are we doing here? So, I want to give you all a little bit of background, and I know to the council I'm going to sound like a broken record, but we're currently in the process of updating our comprehensive plan, our park and recreation master plan, our trail master plan, and we're doing a special plan for FM 407. Now, as part of the comprehensive plan, we're looking at the vacant properties in the city of Highland Village. When we started this, we only had 78 acres of available land in the city. And of course, that's not one contiguous tract of property, they're scattered all here and there. Since we started this process, we've had several conversations with developers who have looked at some of those properties. If they required a zoning change, we tried to ask them to maybe wait till we get to the comprehensive plan, and we can get some real clear and concise guidance as to what those properties will be. Sometimes it's difficult for developers to wait, and when there's a need out there, and developers see that, they want to move forward. So what we wanted to do is to give this one developer a particular time tonight to talk about a proposed project on Barnett Road that they would like to do. Now, please keep in mind, for them to do this, it would require zoning change, so it would come back to planning and zoning commission, and then the city council. So this is really for information purposes, it will give you guys an idea of what may be coming toward, for you in the future. But because we're in the process of updating the comprehensive plan, we kind of wanted to do it this way, so y'all would get that heads up. So with that, Dusty, I will turn it over to you if you're going to make the presentation, and you can get started.
Thank you.
You bet.
Dusty, you're gonna have to come up, you're gonna have to go up there.
And you've got the changer right here, and I think we'll have your presentation up there. Just point that at Scott.
Well, I'd first like to say thank you for your time. I'm honored to be here and I'm excited to present to you guys what I am calling Whitestone Village, which is a proposed townhome project on Barnett Boulevard. So, as we get started, next slide, please. Let me tell you a little bit about me. I grew up in a small town in northeast Louisiana, graduated high school, went to college at northeast Louisiana University in Monroe, which is now called the University of Louisiana Monroe. Graduated there with a construction degree, construction management, had a job offer in Dallas when I graduated, so I rented a U-Haul, packed what little I had, and I headed west. That's been over 25 years ago. So, I went to work for a multifamily construction company, development and construction company. I've spent my entire career in multifamily. And while working, I went back, got an MBA at the University of Dallas Graduate School of Management with a degree in finance. So, my career, I've had experience with assisted living, senior living, student housing, what I call a RAP or a walk-up garden-style apartment projects, many, many of them, and also residential homes. So, I've had quite a bit of experience in the multifamily industry. Okay. So we'll start, I'm gonna look down, I can't read that, so I'm gonna look down here in a little bit. So this project that we've, we're proposing is townhome project of new project, new townhomes, and it is, what will this project do for the people of Highland Village? Sorry, I'm getting, but it provides stability in property values, provides stability in schools, and provide a tax resource as well. What does this project do for new homeowners? It can provide housing within walking distance of elementary school and a middle school, and you'll hear me say that two or three times during this presentation, which I think is very, very important, the, the location of the property. It's also conveniently located close to Marcus High School, within about a mile of there. Lower utilities. Also, it is located next to an assisted living facility, which if you had a loved one in assisted living facility, and you wanted to live there, you could walk next door and be able to see your significant other. We just experienced something like that in our family recently. Provide increase in sales tax, way to strengthen the economy, and also provide improved quality of life as well. We did a estimate on the property tax that this project would bring into the city of Highland Village, and we are proposing approximately 135,000 to 150,000 a year based on this project. So, the next two or three slides I have are location analysis. I'll run through these fairly quickly. You guys know the location and you know everything around here, but that's one of the biggest draws to the property is the location. It is within walking distance or a short drive to almost anything you could possibly want. On this slide that we have here, the possible day trips, you can see those, they're highlighted in the dotted line, and then also the weekly trips are in the solid line. Easy access to 35, also easy access to get to DFW Airport. The next slide is location analysis, which points out several areas that are within walking distance of the property. There's fast food, again, there's a middle school, which is right down the street, there's an elementary school next door, there's an assisted living facility next door, Walmart. So, location is absolutely credible. Next slide shows a location analysis with a short drive. So you have Whole Foods, you got Academy, you got Best Buy, Lowe's, basically anything you could want within just a few minutes' drive of where this property is located. On the next slide, it goes into the site plan, and then there's another slide behind this that has a bigger site plan, so we'll be able to take a look at that. But, proposed retaining wall down the west side, which is the neighboring property, and then also probably across the north side, which is where the elementary school is located. We have additional parking in, figured into this site. We're going to do really neat landscaping, exterior lighting, all of the townhomes are two-car garages, there'll be a central mailbox location or two, and, so, alright, next slide, please, sir. So here is the garage and the parking plan, and I realized I had a mistake on this after I sent it, and I didn't want to email again to correct it. So, at the top where the blue bar is, it says rear entry garage, that should be front entry garage. And then the one on the green should be rear entry garage. So this layout shows you what townhomes are front entries and what are rear entries. I want to point out also that if you'll look at this slide, on the west side, which is the neighboring property there, you see that the, the townhomes are located vertical, if you will. When I first designed this, I had them stacked in just like the ones that are in the middle. And I had a road around the backside, which, after thinking about it, the neighbors wouldn't want cars driving back and forth, you know, basically right on their backyard. So I changed that, I put the road on the inside, I put the townhomes button to the property, but I put the entry on the, on the side that is facing Barnett, and then the front of the townhome facing the neighbors. My intention there was, you come home from work, you pull in your garage, how often do you go out in your front yard? It's probably not very often, and plus, it would cut down on the garage and the car noise as well. And then after further thought, I came up with this layout, which, this minimizes the number of townhomes that would be facing or be next to the neighboring property. And then, also, if you keep in mind that there's a proposed retaining wall that will run down the side of that property, which is approximately six foot tall, and these townhomes are two-story, then your townhome is lowered by basically half a story. So at that particular area, based on your neighbors, you would have a one-half story townhome, not two. And then also, as we get back into the elevations here, you'll notice that there are no windows on the second floor of these townhomes that are facing the neighbors. And I did that intentionally. Also, we have 33 proposed extra parking places designed into this project. Okay, next slide, please, sir. So here is a turn sequence that I thought would be very important, there was a couple questions that came up when we met previously about the turning. The way that I have always done it in the past is you want to turn what's called your front door, which is Barnett, your streetscape, and get that looking good and like it's a finished product. But after further analysis, I think as far as turning the units and then working your way out, and you know, you got to keep in consideration, the fire department needs a loop around as well. I thought it'd be best to turn from the school, and you go back towards the west, then it will come back down and go back towards Barnett, and then it'll do that again. And then you'll work your way out with a proposed very small construction trailer over, close to number 15 in that area. And then that way, as residents moved in, you could fence it off, and they wouldn't be impacted by construction or construction traffic for that matter. Okay?
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
And is it okay if we interrupt and ask questions now, or you want us to wait?
No, ma'am, please.
Okay, so, could you go back, can you go back to that? I can't see the numbers in those little circles, so where is, where would number one be?
Top right.
Top right, so it's going to go around, come down, and then out, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And then in, okay.
Correct, and then it comes back across, down, and then back out.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So, on this slide, it is the front-loaded unit floor plans, which is 2,190 square feet. There's two floor plans, there's a front-loaded and a rear-loaded, we talked about that earlier in the colored page that we looked at with the garages that were colored. So this one is 2,190 square feet. Everything you could want, three-bedroom, two bath, two full baths, a powder bath, large walk-in closets, laundries, this has an outdoor porch, full kitchen, obviously, and an outdoor covered patio. Okay?
I have a question.
Yes.
Both your floor plans are all the bedrooms upstairs?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Correct. Okay. On the next one, next slide is the rear entry units. Same thing, it's three-bedroom, two full baths, one powder room. This, this townhome is 1,802 square feet. So, 20, 20, basically 2,200 is the large one, and 1,800 is the smaller one. This is a exterior elevation of the rear entry units that you'll notice over on the right-hand side, that there's a window on the bottom floor, which would be, I go back to the neighbors, I think this is extremely important, is trying to address this as much as I can with the neighbors. There is no windows on the second floor, and the window on the first floor would basically be looking into a retaining wall, not into the neighbors' backyards, swimming pool, or home for that matter. This is the front entry garages, same as the other one, it does have windows on the second floor, it does not face the neighbors, but this one is the one with the garages on the front of the buildings, front of the home, townhomes. Okay. Here's a few exterior features, fixtures, if you will. I'm proposing black windows and black doors, and then also the lighting would be on the building, which would be black, and then street lamps, which would be black, I'm trying to tie all that in together. Proposing iron doors with material shortages like it is, I don't know if that would be available. If not, then it would be a nice wood door on the entries. Here is a exterior finish board, when we met with Scott first time, we spoke in detail about this, and I brought the board with me today if you guys would like to take a look at it, but Whitestone Village, I came up with that based on painting the exterior brick white, so that's where the name came from. And then also probably tying in some interior tile with it being white as well, that would just help go with the name of it. So, the paint colors, you can't see them on this, but again, happy to let you guys take a look at that. And so that's the exterior board, 30-year shingle, it's a gray, and then the, the colors are basically neutrals, but except for the garage door, it has a little bit of a color to it.
How many homes did you?
Is the brick brick or is it hardy?
Did you say?
Is brick brick or is it hardy?
It's brick.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Proposing full masonry, full brick project. You'll see there's a hardy as the fascia is what we're proposing there, but, you know, I had considered doing a little bit of hardy like on the backside, but the backside on this project's the front side, it's, it faces the street, so it wouldn't be enough to, to even do it, so I'm proposing full brick.
Did you tell us how many you were, how many are you proposing total?
There's 65 total townhomes, that's correct.
Okay.
So I had a schedule put together for this project, and this does not include any weather days in here, and obviously, we know that there'll be weather days associated with it. And also, it takes into consideration some of the supply issues that we're having in the construction industry right now, as long, as well as labor. So, this is about a year, not given any weather delays or labor or supply issues, so I'm thinking probably 16 months, give or take, that I think I could complete this project in that amount of time. Okay? Yes?
Financing.
Financing. I have got, well, there's a couple things I'm looking at right now. One is a bank that I deal with, that does construction loans, I've spoke with them, not in great detail. The other one is, I have a friend that does that for a living, he raises capital. He has looked at this project and said he would be very, very interested in doing it. So, that's the two avenues that I've gone down so far.
What is the cost range on the homes?
I'm sorry.
The cost range on the homes?
It would be about 400,000.
That's your price point.
Yeah, yeah, it would be, give or take, 400,000 would be the price point, bigger than 200 a square foot, something like 190 a square foot, something like that.
And then your cost basis per foot?
My cost basis would be about 150 to 160, I think.
And your demographic, what are you looking for?
First-time homebuyers, actually, young, young couples with kids, anybody, honestly, to answer that question, anybody that wants to buy one, but that would be what I would perspective it would probably be. You know, I go back to the schools, and to me, that is so important. I've got two kids in LISD right now, one's in elementary, one's in middle school, and my wife is traveling, and I'm flying solo right now, and this morning, I would have loved to have been able to walk one to elementary and then walk another to middle school, but the convenience of that factor is, I think, very, very important, as well as everything else, which is right down the street. But the schools are a big draw to me for this particular property.
Because of the upstairs bedrooms, you're going to kind of turn away the senior group?
Yeah, I have thought about that, I would agree, and when I say that, I'm talking about the assisted living facility next door. I realize that that could be an issue with a senior that maybe want to, you know, have a townhome and have their spouse or something at the assisted living, but it just, I could not, I couldn't get it into the floor plans with the, with a bedroom on the first floor, I just couldn't make it happen.
Is that an elevator?
There you go, that's right.
Serious?
Yeah, well, they do make them these days, where you don't have to have lots of room and everything.
You don't have to be ADA?
Very costly, but.
Do you have to be ADA compliant?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You said their price range will start around 400,000, so I assume you're selling these, not renting them?
That's correct.
Are you going to set it up as a condominium, or what? How are you gonna, is there going to be an HOA?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, there would be an HOA.
HOA?
Yeah. And it would take care of all the maintenance issues and landscaping and every bit of that.
Exterior issues, right?
Uh, yes, sir.
Your small one?
Right, that is correct, that is correct.
So like if the paint starts to peel on a brick, HOA will take care of that?
That's correct, yeah.
Well, they also assess, so everybody gets, if, if, if there's a problem with the exterior, there is an assessment that is passed along to everybody, it's not just one person.
Right. Yeah, and I've had the question about the exterior paint come up on a couple of occasions, and I've done projects where we've painted before, and they haven't been an issue. The thing that I have learned and realized is if you prime it first and you use a good paint, then you shouldn't have any issues.
And maybe I missed this, but what's, what's the relationship between the west side of your units and that retaining wall? Is, I mean, are they butted up, is there space, is it?
Retaining wall would butt up to the property line, or almost to the property line, and a proposed wood fence would go on top of the retaining wall. So that's how, that's how we would lay it out.
And then where's your first unit as it relates to that?
What's the gap?
Yeah, the gap would be, it has to be, I think, at least 10 foot. I am proposing, hopefully, 15 foot if I can make it work. If not, we may have to lose a unit. You know, we'll see, we put this together, the, I had an architect put it together, so I'm assuming that he has gotten all that correct, but I want to be very, very conscious, very aware of the neighbors on the left side, on, I say the left side, the west side, because I know that that could be a hot issue, and I completely understand that.
Yeah, and I just couldn't tell from the site plan, if that's the case.
Correct.
Can we go back to the site plan, real quick, whoever's clicking slides?
You said you were hoping for first-time buyers with young children, were there any yard play area, anything proposed?
You know, I do not have anything proposed in there currently. I had considered a dog park, a place to take your pets, I'd even considered like a small playground and such, but I did not incorporate it in here, but that would be something that I would certainly entertain.
Both within walking distance?
I'm sorry?
Both within walking distance.
Yes, yes, that's right.
Well, that's walking distance of our dog park.
Right, okay, great, love it.
Trying to look at, there's the trail, it's right there.
Yeah, there was, yes, sir.
All right, so on the west side, up against the neighborhood, there's a whole row of trees along that property line, I'm assuming those would have to go away to make the retaining wall and the grading work.
I would love to leave those, and it would be, I would do anything I could to leave those trees. I have, I have been there, walked it, drove it, and I think that would provide a barrier between the project and the homes. And again, my thought pattern would be that if those trees could be saved, and I had to take out that far-left row, I would do that.
What's the mix of trees?
I'm sorry?
The mix, what kind of trees?
What kind of trees are proposed for this project?
Mm-hmm, no, the trees that are on the west side. What kind of trees?
Oh, I'm not sure what.
Is it scrubbed?
So, let me ask a couple of questions.
I think there's a, there's a power line ahead.
Yeah, there's a power line through there.
Yeah, and I imagine that's.
So they're all cut out?
Yes, sir.
So the three, the three drives on, again, the west side, those are just fire access and driveway access, correct?
Correct.
They don't tie into anything in the neighbor, neighboring neighborhoods, there's no streets that that end in that neighborhood?
Mm-mm.
Are there any existing trails or park sidewalks that?
No.
From that neighborhood, it's just completely closed off, huh?
There's a sidewalk you go up over to the, where the, where the, right?
Right, you're going to need it.
You go all the way around that, and then you go through there. It goes from the school, goes all the way around to the property, back behind the assisted living, goes all the way up there. 407.
Yeah, there's a sidewalk that cuts through that property, where people, where kids can walk through to get to the, to the school.
Yeah, but nothing off of Inverness Circle or anything over this way, though?
Looks like there's.
Or Heather Glen, I guess, but that's on school property, though.
Well, there's nothing in the, there's nothing in the cul-de-sac, wherever that street is that comes in off of, off of, I think that's Silverthorn's still there, that kind of, it goes up, and then you go into Inverness, and then it kind of loops around. There's a walkway between there where the kids walk to school.
But that's way over on school property.
Yeah.
So, what's the existing topography on this? There's slope to that, right?
There is.
It's kind of a high point towards the back?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I think that's right, so. So you were basically leveling that out, and that's where the wall comes from?
Yeah, correct.
So this is.
Did you say any acres?
Okay, so there's something to tie.
I think it's 2.63.
I do not, I have a contract on it, but I do not own it yet, I think.
One last question, so you said a year of construction, that means a year of construction traffic on Barnett Boulevard, which is already kind of bad, right, for 8 p, or excuse me, 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM, right? How do, how do you deal with that on a construction basis, and then is the construction activity is going to be a disruption for heritage, right, for?
Right, for heritage.
For a year? It's heritage, right? I forgot.
You want to hit that right?
So what do you have to traffic path, so I can?
Right, you're going to have to go to the microphone, the law is going to come out, and then Brent, when you guys talk, you're going to need to pick up the microphone, because they can't hear you.
I'll just be quiet.
Sorry.
That's no fun.
Go ahead.
So on the traffic pattern, so looking at the schools in and out, so it starts around 7 o'clock in the morning, and it's over about 7:45. So typically, very in and out is about 350 cars is what actually comes in there, same on the outtake. Whenever you're looking at the traffic pattern going in, that middle two lanes typically doesn't have a ton of traffic in there, so that's where that turn lane's going to be. So you have four lanes that go all the way across, two exterior lanes are the ones that are primary, the ones that are used, those are also where the cars stage to go pick up their kids as well. Each car, if you look at it, that goes in and out there, is about four or five minutes per car, it's on drop-off. Pickup's a little bit longer, you look confused.
Well, it's four lanes on Barnett's, four lanes?
Yeah, you have four lanes all the way across, so the two, the two middle lanes typically don't have a ton of traffic. So the two, the two middle lanes typically don't have a ton of traffic.
It's not a strike.
Wow.
They do park, I'm sorry. Never mind. It's, I'm sorry. Is this on? Can you hear me? They do park when they have shows or whatever, yeah, in those two outside lanes. Will that matter for construction?
Not, not at the moment it doesn't, because their events are normally after construction hours anyway. Those events typically take place after the 6:00 timeframe.
They do have several during the day, only because I know, just because my kids.
Yeah, so the, the adjacent property that's across the street, that's where most of that parks, they do park on the other side, but during the construction, I don't think that would be an issue, because most people don't park in construction sites at that time, at least Mike and.
So land cost is how much? Land cost?
1.2 million.
And price to build? How much to, cost on building?
About 16 million.
How much?
About 16 million.
So about 18, 8 total, correct?
About that.
Okay.
How many acres?
Four.
Just, just under four.
Yeah, 3.96.
And to speak a little bit about the price points, when y'all were talking about the price points. So over the past five or six years in Highland Village, prices have continued to go up. Right now, the average price point's about $536,000. And that's a 2,100 square foot house. And the average age of those houses are 1985. So if you look at how those are actually lining up, our proposed price of new construction with an energy cost of about under a hundred bucks a month, it's very much of appeal to most families around here. So that's actually, our price points are going lower than anything else. The only new construction that's happening right now, the average price point for the new construction is $765,000, which then ages Highland Village out even faster. So talking with the neighboring school, talking to the principal over there, he was like, in 10 years I've been here, we went from 856 students, we're now at 510 students. He said, so anything that's, we're gonna bring students into us, dude, I love. So from that standpoint, we really are trying to make it sure that we can bring families in here that actually can put their kids in those schools and fill the seats. It's a great project, in my opinion, but that's, I sell houses for a living, so of course, I'm gonna tell you, that's a fantastic project. So Brent, I'm sure that's, yeah, he sells houses as well, so it actually goes, it's a reason why we need new housing. Our housing shortage is not going to correct itself in the next two years. It just isn't gonna happen. So trying to create product out here, making sure that Highland Village can still grow, I think it's a great, great idea.
So what's it gonna be if it's, the price point gonna be if you put toilets in and sinks and?
We don't, those are upgrades. Those are all upgrades.
For 400,000, it goes on up.
Yes, yeah. Anything that's added after the fact is gonna be an upgrade.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir.
One of the comments that was made earlier about being on the west side and that becomes a problem, you'll cut out that entire row, which I think I got six units there, if I can see it correctly. That comes out to about $2 million. That's a huge chunk to try and suck up. Where are you gonna cut other costs to make your profit margin?
It's a big chunk.
Does this sit down for last year?
But let me, let me say, this is my passion. This is my dream. I've wanted to do this forever. I think I could still, I say I think, I could still be profitable without that. Obviously, I'd love to have those and then some. But if it were a deal breaker, I would certainly do it. Any question?
What's the width of a park? What's the width of unit?
About 23 foot by.
So the worst case, you'd have to just take out one row.
Yes, sir.
Not, not the whole unit.
Right. Not, yeah, one row, but it's one row down the entire side, which is six units.
It's 23 by approximately 50, 52, something like that, rather than that.
That takes all the others up to 210.
Right.
And as most of y'all know, if y'all been watching anything in this area, as you start selling, the prices continue to go up anyway. So that will just continue to perpetuate on an ongoing process. It's not like you start off with one price and then that's where you end up at. Nine times out of 10, you look at about 10 to 20% increase over time.
What are the units in Riverwalk selling for now? Cause they're all very similar to this.
Between 500 and 600.
450.
Yeah, I mean, they're. The moment they say when they're sold.
Yes. On the project, on one of the projects that were, that I was actually inquiring about in Argyle, they're 60% sold before they ever broke ground. Price point was at 400,000, going up to 650.
They said in Argyle?
In Argyle.
Now, where?
On 377. Right off 377, if you're going.
Southeast corner.
There you go. So and that's, another buddy of mine's doing that project and he's like, it took no time flat.
Robert, I think Robert has a question.
Yeah, for Mr. Kristen, is water and sewer available, readily available to this property for this amount of, so it's been sized and everything, so we don't anticipate any infrastructure upgrades? Okay.
Gas? Gonna be gas furnace or electric?
Um, gas.
Gas, okay.
Just for clarif-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Just for clarification, there's 65 units. Each unit has a two-car garage.
Correct.
So 65 time, you can fit two full-size cars in there? And then you have, so that's what, 130?
Pick up truck and a midsize car?
Yeah.
Possibly 130 vehicles.
130 vehicles with the extra 33 spaces.
Yeah.
Okay, so 150 vehicles. So you're talking about traffic patterns for construction, but what about adding, I mean, if, if you filled up, you know, 100 vehicles right now that are coming in and out, you know, I'm assuming that that adds a lot of now traffic that's coming out of, you know, that.
Coming out of Barnett.
That building.
Absolutely.
So I'm assuming, you know, you've looked at the construction side of it, but not when it's fully built out and.
Yeah, a left, left turn out of there is a pain.
It is impossible. I was about to say, it's.
Almost impossible.
The left turn you can't even do, though, in the morning times or in the afternoon times. So what that does, it actually increases the traffic going through the parking lot. If you watch everybody that turns out of there, they go by Waterburg and they go out that direction.
Yeah, they go through the.
Or they go to the other direction, they turn that direction. So I did think about that and that was something that I actually was looking at as that was coming up. And if you look at it from the standpoint of, right now, there's a lot of people working from home. So if we had 135 vehicles, that's great. And let's just say 40% get to work from home. Now you have 60% of those people going out. Typically, you only have one at a time going out. And you're also reducing it by letting people actually walk their kids to school to a degree. And then they're gonna be also coming out, not always at the same time. So your afternoon traffic that's coming in is typically gonna be after school's already let out. And in the morning time, you might have a few of those coming out at the same time. If they're beginning at 7, but most of the time, they leave at 6:30.
You may have people that buy golf carts.
You may have what? I'm sorry?
People that buy golf carts.
Or bicycles, since Walmart, you know, services the bicycle shop right there, so.
And also on this, initially, I had one entry and two entry, exit into the property based on the traffic.
Me too. I'm taking my golf cart.
If we redesigned for two master plan exits, I know that doesn't address what you're talking about as far as Barnett, so that does help as far as having, you know, a choice.
And you can keep all your construction traffic within your, within the lot? They won't have to use Barnett to, to park, whatever?
There's a great vacant lot across the way from us as well, that we could probably utilize in the timeframe, that that's gonna be there. I'm sure they would love to make a little bit of income just to be able to park people over there.
I said, oh, you want toilets?
I could comment on the parking. I just, I happen to be a banker, that's why I was asking about the price points.
We do a lot of residential subdivisions and we do larger ones. And so everybody always asks, okay, you're gonna have three or 400 cars in here, how are you gonna manage the traffic? Well, the studies really show, not everybody leaves their house at the same time in the mornings.
Correct.
And not everybody comes home. And you may have two cars, but you're gonna have a pretty good piece of debt, family, where mom stays home, or dad stays home, or they work from home. And so the fluctuations, it's not like everybody empties out at one point in time. With that road capacity there, Dan brought up a question, the only thing that you're not gonna have, and it's a very good comment that he made, is a traffic light. You're gonna, you're gonna come out?
I get that.
That's, yeah. Text that.
It has been begged, borrowed, pleaded, and they're not, right? Text that is not.
As the parking guy, the only thing I have a concern about is because there's, you don't have a driveway, everything's gotta go in your garage, there's not gonna be enough room. If folks have a pickup truck, extended cab or whatever, I don't know if it'll fit in your garage or not, and then another car. And so, you know, even, even if you go to a zero lot line community like, what's the place over where Fred lives now?
Ladera.
Ladera. There's, there's, you know, there's plenty of cars that are sitting in the driveway, even though everybody's got a two-car garage, but there's, there's no place to park on the street. There you've got a kind of a compounded problem. You don't have a driveway to sit a car and there's only a few visitor spaces scattered throughout. So I, just in my overall view, I, there's gonna be a parking issue there.
You think it's, you think it's people not parking in the garage or what?
No, getting a truck in. I drive a truck.
But I have a, I have a feeling that, you know, 10% of the cars aren't gonna fit in the garage.
Right.
How big are your garages? I mean, are you gonna take that into consideration because vehicles are much bigger, son?
They're 20, I think, 20 foot, maybe 22 foot. So it would accommodate two normal-sized car.
What about two F-150s? What about?
Well, if you're driving two F-150s, you're probably not gonna be looking at this place.
Knowing that you can't get it in the garage. I mean, it's.
It'll be, it'll be self-regulating.
Yes.
Designed specifically so people would not park out in their driveway, be honest with you. Because you didn't want that feel of the cars out in the driveway, sticking out in the road and everything. When you drive down, it's no cars in the drive, there is no drive, honestly, but there's no cars there. There's parking spaces for them, but that was done intentionally. And there's another property over here in Fire Mountain that did that. And when you drive through that property, it looks so clean because you don't have all these cars and trucks and everything out in the drives.
And you don't want to climb in the parking lot?
It's the, if you go to the Riverwalk, the one that's on Morris, they have driveways that are about as big as the podium, and that's all you get. And then they have front parking where you can park out in the front, something like that, so they have an inlay that you can actually park in front of there, but they don't have a ton of parking over there. There's a design intentionally for that as well.
Your HOA should be able to dictate parking.
Correct.
So if they say, we don't want anybody in the driveway, you gotta pull it in the garage and you gotta pull it in the garage.
Correct.
Where is guest parking? I'm trying to see, you know, if, if you've got front, front driveway, where would a guest park?
So it's highlighted in the light yell, so along Barnett, there's several spaces there. And then.
So all the ones that are gonna be, it's actually the tow colors, you'll see on the fronts. So if you look at the green building, something like that, on the side of it where it says 25-foot fire line.
Right there.
You see them there? And then, yeah, there you go.
Okay.
And then along the top and then the bottom.
Is the road situation now, do they have curbs?
Yes.
They do? Okay. So when you build those parking spaces?
Moving that in.
You're moving that all in? Could see that being abused, like with a school, having some parking spaces right in front of the, your townhomes.
Signs and stuff like that is.
Yeah, don't park.
Comment that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just thinking, if the neighborhood needs to use the parking at the schools, you know, after hours, they got the parking space over there.
Robert has. Robert.
That's a good question. Storm drainage, where's all this water going?
You know. Go ahead.
Is it going into the street and then?
There's a, there's a detention on the other side of the road that I think we can go into that, but you may come to a different.
And, and I guess, leading question, how is this property, in the current master plan, how is this property intended to be? Was it remaining as single, single residential or did it have a commercial?
Right now, it's, it's SF40. And the future, the existing comprehensive plan has it as mixed use.
Okay.
The entire Barnett area is regionally drained.
Okay.
I believe there is an inlet across the street, so they'll probably have to bring in an inlet to get it underground and get it to the detention pond across the street.
Okay, but that inlet outflow or outfall on that inlet is large enough to take four acres of almost 100% impervious runoff?
It's, well, I mean, it's taking the runoff now, but they'll have to add some when they start their civil design.
And then my last question, I guess, have you approached the neighborhood to the west at all with any of this?
I have not.
Okay.
No, I have not.
So they've not, there, nobody's aware of that until, I guess, today.
Till today.
Right. You know, I didn't wanna do that. I would certainly like to do that if I knew that the project would be a go, but I didn't want to go and say something and then, you know, what if it didn't happen to work out or something, then get them stirred up. I just, I would, I'd love to go meet with every single one of them. Would plan to do that if the project moves forward.
Of course, it is the zoning change, the, the property was in the 200 feet.
Right.
And then the wall.
Right.
Yeah, six-foot wall.
But I would think that it would be good if you did.
Eighteen.
Reached out to the, to those residents to get their opinion. I mean, it looks like to me, you've paid very close attention to taking care of those residents. You know, that, that's, what's most important to me are those existing neighborhoods. And I totally understand this project and where it's located, and I'm not sure what else could go there. I know that, you know, that's what the comp plan is for, is to kind of take a look and see what could go there. So I'm not saying that this is a bad plan, and I appreciate the fact that you've turned those townhouses that way, and you don't have windows on the second floor. You're going to put a retaining wall and a fence on top of that. All of those things are going to give privacy to those existing residents. That's what's, that's what's most important to me.
Right.
And I appreciate that you took that, you listened and did that.
Well, thank you. I put a lot of emphasis on that.
At least only four homes.
If I lived there.
Four homes.
I would want somebody to do the same thing for me.
Right, absolutely.
And the way they're angled.
John just.
There's four homes.
Do what?
There's only four homes that bought that property.
But those four people have been in Highland Village.
Oh, no, no, I'm just saying, there's four.
It's extremely important to me that, that they are sensitive to that.
Yeah, no, no, I like, I like what they've done.
So the retaining wall, confirm for me, you know, retaining wall is how tall?
Possibly six foot.
And then the fence on top of that?
Yes, sir.
How, how tall is that?
It would be at least six foot.
So you got 12-foot? Okay.
Yeah, the retaining wall running down behind the assisted living facility is approximately six foot.
I'll tell you what, you'll keep a lot of people happy, those four houses, if you don't take down the trees.
Right. And again, I would do everything that I possibly could not do that. My intention is to not take those trees down. And like I mentioned before, if I had to lose that back room, then I would, I would be willing to do that if I would gain the support of those neighbors.
Is this a gated community?
It was designed as a gated community, based on the width of the roads. But when we last met, it was determined that it did not have to be a gated community for that. I do plan to fence it. I would certainly plan to fence the project, not gated, but fence it. Just for security, privacy, whatever you would refer to it as.
We're not, we're not really into gated communities in Highland Village, okay?
I know, but still.
We're like all family and open, so.
Right. But if somebody had their, you know, their back porch was right there, it may give them. I'd love to not fence it. It's certainly open to that. It would, it would save a lot of money.
You can do it 200-foot.
But my initial intention was.
And there's no yard?
Uh, no.
No grass?
No. There are.
Between? I mean, like.
Yeah, there's, you have some green areas that are actually put in there.
Right.
But, I mean, there's, there's not, there's not a lot of green areas.
Yeah, there's some open space, and then like in the middle here, where you can come out your front door, and you have sidewalks, that area right there would be a green or landscape area.
Earlier you said there was a porch. Do you just mean basically the little front stoop, not really a porch?
On the front entry, the garages, you'll notice right beside the garage, there's a front porch. And then there's also the back.
It's on the right side of it.
A back porch as well. Patio.
So it's a covered patio that's already built in?
Right.
So you're going to build these and then people will move in? So you'll build them on spec basis or you're going to have to pre-sell before you go vertical?
Spec basis, yeah. My intention is to build them and move them in, yeah. And to fence it all, based on, you know, city's recommendations or city's requirements. But when I put together the term sequence, it would fence off the first building from construction and allow.
Make sure whatever bank you're talking to, that they fully understand spec, that it is being built on a spec basis.
Correct.
Because most of the time a bank will say, hey, look, we, we want to assume that the worst happens, you build it, no one comes. So we want X number of pre-sells to get us to a position where our basis is next to nothing. So just make sure you, you clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
Ryan, I don't think you said your name to everybody, so you want to tell your name?
My name's Ryan Colentor, it's kind of local real estate broker. Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I mean, just, but some people might not know who you are. So you're the Realtor?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And who are you with?
Keller Williams.
Okay. And you guys have done your analysis on the potential demographic that would take, would fill up all these?
Yes, sir.
And what's your timeframe on anticipated sellout?
Not, not even a year. I, I suspect pre-sell, once we even announce the project, will be 40 to 50% sold within the first four months, five months.
I was going to bet you that that's the case. When you put a sign up.
There's waiting lists with local builders right now that are 600 long.
I can answer that. It'll, it'll be about five minutes.
Yeah. I mean, Brent's already got at least probably 10.
I've earmarked three of them already, just from tonight, so.
That's why I said elevator.
Definitely look.
Did they, oh, go ahead, Matt.
The property across the street that is the vacant lot, do we have any idea what the intended use for that space is?
We've got the memory center.
Yeah, well, I mean, if it's going to be something that's going to be.
That's a Korean church.
There's a Korean temple down the end. There's a dental right there.
Yeah, that's the first one. And then they, they have one that they're building right now, and they're, and I believe it's for folks that have.
It's memory care.
Yeah, yeah, memory care. And then next to that, next to that is the Buddhist temple.
Yeah, I knew that was there.
And then you've got the.
It was that gap in between the temple and the, that's, that's what's going is the memory care?
Yes.
Okay.
It's about 50% right now.
That's already going vertical?
Yes, yeah. I was going to say, they've already framed it and everything else. That's pretty much, exterior is done.
And, well, never mind, HOA will take care of this. I was going to say, what about investors coming in from California who want to buy one and lease it? But HOA will take care of it.
So you will have that in the HOA.
That'll also probably be in the deed.
That there's so many that can be a rental.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, you can put it in the deed restrictions.
That's, that's a deed restriction, easily taken care of. So HOA doesn't even have to take care of it, we can do that as a deed restriction.
Right. Okay.
Again, thinking about costs, do we have an intended HOA fee? What the annual will be or roughly?
Looking at about that $150 to $200 a month. That's, we're trying to stay in line with what all the other townhomes subdivision are staying in. Sold one the other day that was $620 a month. Trying to stay away from them.
You said these are going to be energy efficient. Are you getting some sort of, you know, LEED certification or something that would? Okay.
You're going to, we'll have all, everything will be energy star certified. So as far as getting a LEED certification.
As far as the envelope, but as far as the envelope of the house, there's no like, you know, testing or, okay.
No, we did spray foam. We're looking at a lot of the spray foam stuff to go encapsulate everything else, so that actually increases our cost, but it also decreases the cost of, yeah, I mean, people love that aspect.
Will the final windows, things to energy star.
So council, do you have any other questions, comments?
I'll make a comment. The district started out as townhomes. Okay? They got into financial troubles and then turned into apartments. So I asked about financing earlier, want to make certain if you can pull it off, that it can get to completion and not go halfway and leave us with a pig in the po.
Well, the only comment I'll make on those townhouses is when they came out, they're trying to sell those at way above market price points at the time.
Well, and remember, that was 2008 and 2009.
And we had a little problem.
Yes.
And the economy tank, so that was what affected them.
And even with some local bankers that I've spoken with, they've looked at the project and go, what do you need?
Okay.
We're, we're excited. What do you need? How much do you want? What are you wanting us to do?
I like what I see.
Yeah, before you get out of the room, you need to get my business card.
I think, let's strike that from the minute.
I didn't say that.
You didn't say that.
My name is Dan.
Yeah, really.
Mr. Jaworski said that.
Okay, so, oh, I'm sorry, Robert, go ahead.
One last comment. Everything looks great. I would say, I would recommend you approach the neighborhood tier west and probably just cut a section along that property line to kind of demonstrate visually the six-foot retaining wall, six-foot fence, and how that aligns with their property and your property. So, I mean, it's a pretty simple exercise, but could go a long way to solving any questions you have about the, you know, what they're going to see out their back window pretty soon, right?
Get four on board before they bring 400 against it.
Yes.
Yeah, and I'd also say, to provide us with as much traffic information as you can, because that will be the first question we get.
Yeah, we, we will do a full traffic analysis. Didn't want to do it early.
Yeah, I mean, there's a major, that's for public safety, that's the biggest headache. I've been trying to turn left for four minutes at 7:30 PM, trying to get out of there, to turn right, right, and go around and try to pull a U-turn where people are pulling U-turns from the car wash going the other way. And the problem isn't this street with four lanes, it's 407. And now you've added, you know, 150-some parking spaces and just a bunch, bunch more issues with already kind of a 407 that's got, it's, it's hard to take a left, and then you've got people coming the opposite way from the car wash, pulling U-turns all the time, and everything else looks great. It's just like, I, I just know how big of a headache that is, and it makes you a little like, man, there's going to be some problems. Public safety issue, traffic, so, but everything else looks great.
I think that's why so many people do detour behind Water Burger and go down that direction.
Yeah.
So.
May want to talk to Water Burger.
Well, I was going to say, they can.
Coupons while they go by the.
Okay. So TMZ, anybody else have any comments, questions? All right, well then, I'm going to adjourn for the council at, oh, what time is it? 6:57?
And I will adjourn for the planning and zoning commission.
Oh, I'm out. Go ahead.
Real quick, if I am fortunate enough to build, to build this project, it will be me on that job site every single day. It won't be somebody I went and hired and told them to go figure it out and go do it. I will be sitting there every day, not going to put this thing together and then hire somebody to do it. May have to have a helper, but I will be there. It will be me, I will be on site. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Six, because all I need to know is there anything on the agenda for clarification? So it's 6:58, we're in early work session. Anybody have anything on, for clarification on the agenda? Perfect. Then we are adjourned until 7:00 PM. Oh. Good evening. Welcome to the Highland Village City Council meeting. Today is February the 8th. It is now 7:05 PM, and we are going to get started. Let the record show, all council members are present. I am actually going to lead us in prayer tonight and lead the pledges, so would you please bow your heads? Most gracious, loving heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and thank you for our many blessings, and they are numerous. I pray you grant council, this council wisdom and guidance as we carry out the business of our great city. Father, I pray for our first responders and military, both here and on foreign soil. Keep them safe, give peace to their families while they're serving, and bring them home safely. Lord, I lift up the, the family of the fallen police officer in Double Oak. I pray that you give them comfort and peace beyond all understanding as they navigate through the next days, weeks, and years. I also pray, Lord, that they feel the love from their brothers in blue and from the communities surrounding them. Lord, I thank you for loving us, I thank you for forgiving us. In your son's precious name, I pray. Amen. And thank you. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. All right, we are going to move to district comments. Ms. Miller, do we have any district comments?
No.
Okay, skip over that. Though the mayor and council reports on items of community interest pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.0415, city council may report on the following items: expression of thanks, congratulations, or condolences, information about holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders of upcoming city council events, information about community events, and announcements involving imminent threat to public health and safety. Council, does anybody have anything? You want to do it first, John, and then I'll go do it?
No, I don't have any.
You don't, you're not going to give us a report on the appraisal district?
Right now?
I mean, yeah, if you.
Okay, no, I can, I can give a short.
Yeah, a brief, yeah.
Okay. At the last meeting, we had reviewed a letter from the county judge and county commissioners to the central appraisal district expressing some concerns that they had with the operation of the appraisal district. So I went, I attended the appraisal district board of directors meeting, trying to understand if they were going to address the issues that were in the letter. First off, they didn't, in the open session. That wasn't part of it, there wasn't a, an agenda item. One thing I learned at the meeting is turnover of board of directors, so there's two new board of directors, members on the board, so the current chairman is also no longer chairman, he's the secretary, so they had a vote change. So Mr. Stafford, who was chairman of the board, is no longer. So very informative. I put together a package, I think all of you have gotten a package of that. I did get a further letter today from Hope McClure, who is the chief assessor, giving partial response to what they've given to the county. Okay? And I can bring that up, I'll provide that to you later. But the bottom line is what I took away from the meeting is a lot of the issues that were in the letter were old issues and they're past issues, primarily issues around the new software system, the DUCAD you started using. And in digging in that, the DUCAD selected a software company that was in. And in digging in that, the DUCAD selected a software company that was in beta software. They did not have an installed system anywhere, and therefore it failed. And so a lot of the issues that the DUCAD suffered was due to a failed software conversion. They went back to the old software. It is now up and running. They made it through. Okay? Didn't get into a lot of the reasons why that was chosen. I'm certain there's a sidebar on that, and I've got a little information, but I'll share that. Previous board members made that selection, okay? But how they made it, we don't know. But the software is up and running, okay? And they've gotten through, you know, all of the morass that we had through the 2020 COVID. That's why part of it was shut down, okay? So people couldn't go in. So that was a big part of what the county was concerned with. The other things that the county was concerned with really were not covered at the meeting. Miscommunication as far as when voting happens on voting of new board members, okay? Kind of a sidebar. And then there were some comments made by the county assessor, the accessory review board, that were not addressed. So bottom line, I looked at it, there was nothing in there that really was specific to Highland Village, okay? Didn't have an impact on Highland Village. So my recommendation was that we take no further action, just listen to what the response is from the accessory review board, or DUCAD, to the county, and then just stay silent on the rest of it.
Thank you, John. Thank you for attending the meeting. I'm sure it was...
It was informative.
Loads of laughs.
All right. Council, does anybody else have anything? So I'm going to, I do. Ken, you want to join me? Did you roll your eyes, Ken? You know, we do this every year, and I was asking, how many years? So we've done it every year since I've been on council. How many? This is the 29th year. Perfect. So there, here's your certificate. Let me, I'm going to read this news release here. So for everybody that's watching and everybody that's in the room, this is really exciting news. So Governmental Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the City of Highland Village at its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2020. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial history and motivate potential users and users groups to read the report. Their certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. And Ken, 29 years. Congratulations. You guys, your team is amazing.
We have a good team.
Absolutely, absolutely. Oh, wait, wait. Wait. Perfect. Thank you, Ken. You don't want to say something, Ken, like, 29 years and counting?
Four years.
I mean, guys, that is phenomenal, okay? To say that for 29 years, they've been awarded that, it's phenomenal. We have great staff in all departments. So, all right, we're going to move on. If nobody else has anything, we're going to do the village report.
Highland Village sure was beautiful during the recent winter storm. Thanks to city crews for working around the clock. To make sure you're ready for our next storm, here are some tips from Justin Apprezel.
Hello, this is Justin, manager of utilities for the City of Highland Village. We're going to try and give you some helpful tips today to help prevent you from having an emergency. The first thing we would like you to check is your hose bibs. Make sure the water hoses are disconnected, and that you have some sort of a sock or an insulated cover to strap around those to keep them from freezing up. Another prevention method is to open any cabinets that you have with water lines that are on the exterior walls. That way, some room heat can get to them to keep them from freezing up. Just a slow drip or a trickle will help keep water flowing through the lines and help keep them from freezing up. Anything in a non-heated room, you're going to want to wrap with insulation of some sort, styrofoam, or foam, or fiber wrap, something that you can get at a local hardware store. If you don't know where your outside water shut-off is, it's pertinent that you locate those in case you have a pipe burst or pipe freezing. You're going to want to be able to shut that water off as quickly as possible. We're here 24/7, so we want to make sure you guys are taken care of. Please give us a call at (972) 317-2989 during business hours of 7:00 to 4:30. Anything outside of that is (972) 317-6551, and we're here to help in any way we can.
You're invited to a very special open house as we work with you to develop the future vision of Highland Village. As we near build out, it is important for us to plan our future parks, trails, new development, and improve existing retail centers. We are updating the planning documents designed to guide us through the coming years. We need your input. Join us for a come-and-go open house on February 23rd at the Highland Village City Council Chambers, anytime between 10:00 AM and 7:30 PM, and learn about this project and provide your vision of Highland Village.
Okay. Thank you very much. Council, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda, so it may be considered separately, and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. Does anyone want to move anything? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to number nine. Consider approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on January 25th, 2022. Number 10, consider resolution 2022-2984, adopting the Texas subdivision and special district election and release form regarding the Endo Par Texas opioid settlement. Or 11, consider a resolution 2022-2985, awarding and authorizing a contract with A&amp;M Construction and Utilities for the Southwood Number Two Ground Storage Tank Repainting Project. Number 12, receive investment reports for quarter ending December 31st, 2021. And 13, receive budget reports for period ending December 31st, 2021. Council? Mr., I'm sorry. I was going to say, Mr. Lombardo. I'm sorry, Barbara. Ms. Fleming?
If I could quit laughing. I move that we approve the consent agenda, all items.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Heslop?
I second the motion.
All right, we have motion and a second. Council, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carry 7-0. We did not meet in closed sessions, so we are going to move on to number 15. Consider approval of a site plan for the property located at Lot 5D Celebrations Village, Phase 2, commonly known as 2444 Justin Road. Mr. Crispin?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. City's received an application for a site plan to construct a retail building of approximately 6,400 square feet in the Celebrations Development, which is a PDR planned development retail. It's properties located at 2444 Justin Road, which is in between the existing Chicken Express and the Hugo's Restaurant. Mr. Gregg is the owner of the site, and he is proposing a retail center with three tenant spaces. This site is allowed for a drive-through, so one of the tenant spaces could be a drive-through. The other is basically a retail space, a restaurant with an outdoor seating patio area, and a drive-through is all allowed in the PDR. We should have a site plan up.
Scott, can I ask you, did you say in three different phases?
No, three tenants.
Three tenants, okay. But not building it in three different phases?
No.
One thing, all right.
There's a site plan.
Ms., I'm sorry.
It's kind of small. I don't know if it's on your screens.
It is.
It is.
You can see that there's three spaces, kind of a, the bigger ones in the middle. The one on the east side would be the one with the patio. Of course, you can see where the drive-through would be on the western side. As part of this development, we have applied for a sidewalk permit for FM 407 frontage in the 407 right-of-way. This is also complying with the city's Trailmaster Plan, and the eight-foot trail section in the rear of the property will connect to the existing trail sections. This is one of those sections that's missing right now. So Chicken Express stops, and then this would pick up, and there'd be another little empty space where the Hugo's is. But when that, there's another lot there that would have to develop to connect, make the final connection. Parking, they do meet the parking requirements per ordinance. All signage on this proposal would be regulated by existing ordinance. They are allowed, and we do have a signage plan submitted. They're allowed, with the three tenants, they're allowed one frontage sign each, which will be, the sizes will be regulated by existing ordinance. They are allowed one monument sign with a total of 32 square feet. Those are the standalone masonry signs on the frontage near the 407 right-of-way. City staff and our consulting engineers have reviewed this submittal and determined it does meet with the current city code. Staff worked this project with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it was voted to move forward with a unanimous vote with one correction. There's a typo for a five-inch caliber tree, should be four. I do have the engineering firm here and the architect, and we'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
Scott, would you please confirm the developers, it Gunn, Gregg, or Gregg, Gunn? I think it's Gunn, Gregg.
Mr. Gregg is all at Berrick.
Yeah, Gunn, Gregg, right, yeah. I know him, yeah.
Okay.
He's a good guy.
Council, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Crispin?
I've just got, I've got one.
Okay.
I know this came up in the P&amp;Z meeting, and I just don't recall how it was explained. Looks like on the eastern side of the property, there's a property line that bisects what would be, I guess, driveway, sort of. How is that being, how is that, the fact that it's encroaching on the other, is that all, still the same property owner, or?
It's a separate property, and we have an easement by separate instrument being executed.
Okay. The temporary construction easement that goes along the front into the eastern side, will that be forfeited once the project is complete?
When the project is accepted, temporary construction easement ceases.
Okay.
Anybody else? Robert?
I love that they have a sidewalk from a public right-of-way to the retail center. So my only question is mainly for the city. So they have that proposed barrier-free ramp across that driveway. There's no barrier-free ramp on the other side of that driveway to the west. Is there any, I mean, I know, we got to wait till that sidewalk gets built, and it may never get built because it wasn't forced to be built before. So for safety reasons, is there any concern that, I mean, I don't know where they're coming from, I don't know where they're going to go on that sidewalk, but there's only one side of that driveway that has a barrier-free ramp. There's a curb on the other side, so.
In the bond program, there is, money's allocated for a sidewalk project along 407. At that time, we'll address that with a project.
Okay. Thank you. That was it.
Okay. Council? Somebody on this side? I know what I want to go in here, should I make those suggestions now? Before I go.
I've got the brochure.
You know...
The manager's got the brochure.
Are the tenants identified?
I don't, are the, their tenants not identified, are they?
I don't know.
Well, let me help you with that.
But you're planning on three of them.
Yeah, they're planning on three.
But if it, it could be one, two, or three, correct? Or do they have to have three, or what?
They're proposing three, up to three.
Okay, it's up to.
They just haven't leased it yet.
I understand.
If, I would assume if a large enough tenant comes in, they could...
Want to do the whole enchilada, they get the whole building.
A Taco Casa, for example, with a drive-through. Or, what was it, Chop Stop? That's a great salad place that's over in Frisco. So it's on the record. That would be great. I would love that. All right, council?
I have one other question. Just clarification, the sanitary sewer easement that's on the north side, does that stretch all the way across Celebrations property, or is it just indignant to, indigenous to this property?
No, it's for the entire development.
Okay, so it goes all the way, okay.
Goes across and then south, just down the drive on the other side. It goes there, and that goes down.
Oh, okay. Yeah, 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 okay. So then therefore, not all the properties have this easement going across?
Sorry, but the lot four, right next to it, has access to it through that main drive to the east, so.
There's a sewer line there that serves the entire property. It zigzags through the property.
Right, this one, this one just hits the back of the property.
And then turns south.
Right. So if you ever had to get to that sewer line, you're ripping up a bunch of parking spots.
Well, that's difficult, though.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, Mr. Lombardo?
There's nothing else. I'd like to make a motion.
Perfect, you go for it.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, item 15. That's red.
All right, thank you.
Seconded.
District has a second. Any further discussion, council? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carry 7-0. Taco Casa, Chop Stop. Okay, moving right along. Number 16, consider resolution 2022-2986, authorizing the city manager to amend personnel policies and procedures manual to add Good Friday as an official city holiday. And council, before Jana does her presentation or says anything, I'm the one that asked for this to be put on, for the very reasons that we're in our packet, we, everyone's facing hiring issues, and so if we have to sweeten the pot any way we possibly can. So take it away, Jana.
That was very well explained. I don't think I need to say anything else, sorry.
Please, you did all that work.
Well, the mayor did approach us, and, you know, who doesn't enjoy time off, right? And adding a holiday is an economical way to show appreciation to our employees, and really, all it takes is council authorization to add it to our personnel policies. So that's why the subject is worded, and the resolution is worded the way that it is, is to authorize the city manager to update our general policies and procedures, adding Good Friday as a holiday. So I think in the packet, I mentioned there is some research going around back when Juneteenth was declared a federal holiday. All of my cohorts in other cities, we did surveys, and so I have a lot of good data available, so we were able to quickly put this together. And it did show, I think it said 80, 80-something percent of the cities that participated do offer Good Friday as a holiday already. And in North Texas, this, adding this would put us up to 13 paid dates off, excuse me, which would put us ahead of the curve when it comes to, you know, offering time off. We would be at the top 10%, 5% of cities in North Texas. So that does give us an edge and enhances our benefit program, and it's also something that is appreciated. And it's also something that is appreciated by all employees. Just the general, as with all of our holidays, the emergency services, of course, will still remain. We will always be ready to answer the call. And those personnel who work that day will accrue a holiday, that they can take it another time. So everyone is truly touched by this benefit.
So, so like emergency services, they get like an extra floating holiday? Okay. Can the two of you get together and call my company because they're taking holidays away instead?
Now, I'm thinking about adding another one. Let's see.
The mayor's.
We're, yeah, the mayor, the mayor's birthday.
Charlotte Day.
Texas Independence Day.
It's a legitimate holiday. I'm curious what city's trying to get, do away with Christmas Eve. There was one in the, in all the report that said they were looking at doing away with Christmas Eve.
Yes, I can't remember which one it was and my survey data didn't identify respondents, but yeah.
Do you may have any questions?
They're Scrooges.
Obviously. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, then I will, I will make the motion. Make a motion that we approve resolution 2022-2986.
Second.
Who?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Mr. Jaworski, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, Scrooges, same sign. I'm gonna carry 7-0.
On behalf of the employees, I thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank y'all for everything that you do. Okay, moving on to 17, consider resolution 2022-2987, calling a general election to be held on May 7th, 2022, for the purpose of electing council members to place one, mayor, two, four, and six. Calling a special election to be held on May 7th, 2022, for the purpose of electing a council member to fill an unexpired term to place seven and authorizing a joint election agreement and contract for election services with Denton County. Ms. Miller.
Mayor and counsel, so it is that time of year pursuant to our city charter and Texas election code, the city's general election is supposed to be held on the uniform election date, which is the first Saturday in May. So this year, it's May 7th. The charter further requires that the, on this election, in even years, we would include places one, which is the mayor's seat, two, four, and six. Those would be included in our general election. And with that, the filing season had opened in January and, on January 19th. So we've had some people file already. And with that, we have a current council member that has filed to run for a different seat. So therefore, that opens a seat whose term is not up this year. It's up next year. So we have an unexpired term, basically. So with that, we are required to call a special election to fill place seven. So per the election code, formal action by council is required to call the general election and the special election. Kind of going back to the special election, there's a filing period for each one for the general election and a different filing period for the special election. So with the special election, after council takes formal action to call or order the election, we would open up and take applications for that. And that filing period would run until 5:00 PM on March 7th. So also, so the resolution 2022-2987 officially orders the elections, the general and the special, in addition to approving and authorizing the joint election agreement with Denton County for election services.
Okay, Ms. Jaworski?
I was just gonna offer a motion if the.
Well, hang, I have a question. So the special election, it's gonna be on the same ballot?
Yes, ma'am.
Will it be, I mean, like one, two, four, six, seven? Or does it in a, and?
It will have general election, it'll be on the same ballot, but within the order on there, they'll have the general election with place one, two, four, six, and special election for place seven.
And then the filing period for that begins?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow and go through?
It runs through March 7th.
March 7th at 5:00 PM. Okay, thank you.
And people should know that if you want to be in seat seven, you get the privilege to run again immediately one year later.
In a year, yes, that's correct.
Yay!
Okay, Ms. Jaworski?
I'd just like to make a motion, we approve resolution 2022-2987.
Perfect, all right, we have a motion, counsel?
A second.
Oh, we have a second. Tom, that's good, or either one.
Okay. Go with John.
Tom or John, doesn't matter. Okay, counsel, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? I'm gonna vote no. I'm just kidding.
Thank you.
7-0. What would happen? I'm just kidding. I voted no. All right, well, good luck, guys. Number 18, receive Highland Village Police Department's annual compliance report under the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure, Section 2.131 through 2.138 prohibiting racial profiling. And tonight, we, we have two, I guess.
Two, yeah.
Mr. Pittinger and?
Wanna have, yeah.
Mr. Slipp?
Counsel, mayor, counsel, staff, as you know, I've been doing this report for many years, I think it's like 15. So I'm kind of passing the torch on here to Sergeant Pittinger. And if you didn't know, he got accepted to LEAMIT, which is run by Sam Houston State, and it's a top-notch leadership course that, that is given to law enforcement, like nationally recognized. So to help him through that course, he's gonna give the presentation tonight. So thank you.
Well, congratulations on your being a.
Mayor, council members, my name is David Pittinger. I'm a sergeant here at Highland Village. Been here Saturday, last Saturday, on the 5th, was 18 years for me.
Wow.
I have loved every minute of it. However, I've never had an opportunity to present anything to the council. So thank you for the opportunity to present this report tonight. And it works, okay. The criminal code procedure requires, it's mandatory that we present this information to the council and we also present it to TECO, the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. We do that digitally and we do that before March 1st. We do have our own general orders covering bias-based policing or racial profiling. And it pretty much mirrors the criminal code procedures, 2.131 and 2.132, which essentially says we can't racially profile. Highland Village is in compliance with state laws as we have a formal, comprehensive process, including informative departmental webpages. If you never clicked on that link, it's, it's very informative and it tells you exactly what to do if you have a complaint or, and it gives you some education on that as well. As a peace officer, if, a peace officer that stops a motor vehicle for an alleged violation of a law ordinance shall report information relating to the stop, including. And these are all the categories that we have to collect, information on their gender, race, ethnicity, whether, whether that information was known prior to the stop, reason for the stop, location, whether a search was conducted and if so, what, what was the reason for the search, whether contraband or other evidence was discovered, and if so, what's the description of that contraband? The result of the stop, whether we issued a warning, a citation, or if the person was arrested, if it was an arrest, the reason for the arrest, and whether the officer used physical force resulting in bodily injury. Now, the next 13 or so slides we're gonna look at cover all of these categories. I guess first, you might wonder how we collect all that data. We're not, not just doing spreadsheets by hand. The council and the city of Highland Village has provided us with incredible equipment. Our ticket writers now are on the phones that we carry. It's just a software program. And the officer actually can't complete the traffic stop unless he's collected all that information that we just talked about. We are so blessed here to have the technology that we've been provided with. So starting with gender, as you can see, we won't go through all the categories, but we did 1,046 traffic stops on females and 1,367 stops on male. And the definitive information that you could get from this is that women are better drivers than men. Would, would be my opinion. That's what we're discovering, that's what the numbers say. And then this is just a, a total of all traffic stops. It shows that we did 2,413 traffic stops and this is the breakdown of male and female. The vast majority of the time, the officer does not know who they're gonna stop. 96, 96% of the time, we don't know who we're stopping. The reason for the stop, we've got these four categories, moving traffic, moving traffic violations, pre-existing knowledge, vehicle traffic violation, and violations of the law are the reasons that we can come in contact with people. The locations of the stops, these are broken down by the state and as required. The county road was a bit of a misnomer this year. There was a, some miscommunication and it's a bit of a training issue that we're addressing right now as we speak. County road shouldn't be anywhere in that purport. It didn't really affect the report, we're still reporting. It's just, it should have been state highway instead of county road. So if you take the county road and the state highway, then you've got the right number.
I understand.
Of the 2,413 stops, 74 times, we did, we did complete searches. And those are the, the breakdown of those searches. Reasons that officers can search people, consent after a traffic stop and the violator's free to go, officer can ask for consent, officer walks up to the, the car and sees contraband in plain view, incident to arrest, the vehicle is searched as if, like a DWI or something like that, where we can search the vehicle, inventory on just a basic arrest if we're inventorying the car, or a probable cause. And then, let's see, 2,339 times, we did not complete any searches. Of the 74 searches that we did do, 63 times, contraband was discovered and that's the breakdown of who it was discovered on. 11 times, no contraband was discovered. The types of contraband that we find, alcohol, drugs, other, stolen property and weapons.
What would define other?
Yeah, what would be other?
Other, I, I looked at one before I came in and it was actually a fake ID was, was one of the things that we collected. Typically, that's gonna be like drug paraphernalia that we can't categorize as drugs.
Oh, so like a, like a clip or?
Exactly.
Something like that?
Yes, sir. And the result of the stop, whether we wrote a citation or a citation and arrest, written warning, written warnings and arrest. And the breakdowns of all that. We wrote 655 citations, everything else we wrote were warnings last year. And the arrests were based on outstanding warrants, violation of the penal code, or violation of a traffic law. And was physical force resulting in bodily injury used during the stop? And that was zero. That's, all that slide tells us is that we didn't hurt anybody. And. And 17 times last year, an arrest was made that didn't, it wasn't based on the contraband that was found. And 12 times, the arrest was made on contraband that was found. So in summary, racial profiling data is reported by officers and analyzed using our Brazis ticket software. Once again, that's just incredible software that we're blessed to have. Vehicle and body worn camera video are retained for a minimum of 90 days per state law, unless it's like a case that's gonna go to court and then obviously, we would keep it longer. We did have one racial profiling complaint that was made in '21. It was a third-party complaint was made and it was investigated and alleged, it was, the allegation was unfounded.
What's a third-party complaint?
Somebody, just cursory description, an officer completed a traffic stop and where they were stopped, a passerby believed that the officer didn't have a right to be talking to them. They didn't know that we were conducting a traffic stop and they didn't believe that we had a right to be talking to these people. So it was, it was unfounded and they understood the explanation. And HPPD, based on me presenting this tonight, is in compliance with all Texas racial profiling laws. And now, we're open for questions. Anybody has any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, I do have one. Do you break it by Highland Village residents or not? Does that fit anywhere in this?
There is nowhere, no. We, we would not be allowed to do that because that's not a requirement of what's based on, what the state requires of us.
Okay.
I understand, that would be good information to have.
The ticket-writing software is gonna have the residence on the driver's license, correct?
It would not be hard to capture that information, correct?
I mean, that, I know that's not for reporting purposes to the state, but it would be interesting to see in total, how many people were actual, are citizens that were getting a ticket versus people from other towns, states, whatever.
And, and if you would like that, I, we could look into producing some kind of.
Sounds like something we may be interested in.
With this report, it would just be something else that we would.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, I'll take a look and see what we can do with that.
Okay.
Mr. Feaster?
Sergeant, can you go back, who goes back, sorry, to the, that one, sorry, 12. This was reported as 100% and cut me off, I'm gonna say something wrong here, but did the Highland Village Police Department not have an incident in 2021 where a motorist was forcibly or?
Well, that's a different category. That would be no injury, she did not, that, the subject did not report any injury.
Okay.
And that, that's all the state requires.
Oh, I'm sorry, bodily injury, sorry.
Correct.
I need to read, thank you.
That was a completely different, different matter.
See reading counts, it's always important.
Amazing.
I may have, I may have missed it and I'm just curious, but when you're doing, when you're going through your checklist, I suppose, during a stop, how are you determining an Alaska Native, Native American versus a Pacific Islander or?
A lot of times, the officer will have that information in the return when you run the person. It comes back on their driver's license, what they're, how they're categorized.
Okay, okay.
Obviously, we need to get, we need to get stopped, so we, just kidding.
I'm good.
Oh, ouch. But I'm still gonna know people.
There goes your Good Friday.
Very good, very good presentation. Thank you so much.
I would like to, I would like to say, I know you guys get tired of hearing this, but we on the police side appreciate so much the support that we get. We have better equipment than any other cop I know.
Well, can I just say that we appreciate y'all?
Absolutely.
From the, yes, we all do, so. Chief, you wanna say something?
Mayor, yes, just please, great job, David, for your first time in front of the council. Thank you so much. And to answer your question, Mr. Lombardo, we've provided that data before for like specific drug arrests, if they were Highland Village residents or not. Anything is, is captured, we can, we can run a report on it. So getting addresses, to run the addresses, yes, as long as they were recorded correctly, okay? There could be a plus or minus if someone wasn't living in the city, something like that. But he gives a great insight into that. We'll check into that. And I just want to say with all that data collected, I want to highlight, it takes about nine minutes for officers to do a traffic stop. If there's nothing going on out of the ordinary, they, they have you on your way in about nine minutes for a warrant, written warning, filing, all that data they're entering, or a actual citation, so.
So when you come back, you, you can't, you can't end it until you've completed that entire process, you said? And then you just come back and put it on a docking station and it uploads it to?
It goes straight to courts.
There you go.
So there, there's no human interaction.
That's awesome.
It is awesome. And then we don't do written warnings here for that reason, so we can capture the data.
On, on your arrest?
I'm sorry, I, I said written, I meant verbal. We don't.
Verbal, right, yeah.
Just out of, just out of curiosity, you have one of your slides that showed that you'd issued a written warning and then a subsequent arrest?
More than likely, that would have been an arrest. And then instead of charging him for the drug paraphernalia, they just, the officer just wrote a written warning because he was already arrested for something else. And he just, the officer didn't want to pile on somebody or whatever. So that, that would be typically what that would be.
Okay.
Perfect. So a verbal warning does not show up anywhere?
It, it doesn't show up because we don't do that. The officers are not allowed to do that. We, we have to capture this data.
They're a dangerous kind of situation most often for verbal warnings in bigger cities or other places that someone may stop you. The record of that stop is gone. It's not there. So we, we record stops for various reasons, obviously, to, to stand up and say, hey, this is who we are and this is what we do. We can back up what we do with, with written everything, with substantial data, you know, as long as the data's entered correctly. So those are typically places that get into trouble when they do the verbals and for all kinds of reasons, which I really not prefer to go into tonight, so.
So those written warnings, though, when you, if they've been stopped once or twice before, it comes up on, on your information that they, you have been written warnings?
Yes, ma'am. The officer has a decision-making model. And if we see that, you know, you're not getting the message that we've warned you two or three times about slowing down and you haven't, then it might be time to.
I'm trying. I'm trying, okay, I'm trying. I'm not the mayor anymore, I'm gonna stop speeding.
You said that model didn't count.
Yeah, really. Okay. Well, again, thank you so much, great presentation. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Council. So that was just a, we don't need to do anything? Do we do, we need to, we have to accept it?
We have to make a vote that we?
We accept it.
You what? What'd he say?
We have to make a motion to accept it.
Mr. Lombardo?
I would like to make a motion that we accept the Highland Village Police Department's annual compliance report.
My second. Perfect, and we have a second by Barbara. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay. And we're gonna move on to late work session status reports on current projects and discussion of future agenda items. Council, does anyone have anything? Any updates they would like to get at another meeting? Nothing? Okay. Any update on the light at the Service Road and Highland Village Road? Tech dot?
Oh, yeah, Scott.
Are we ever gonna get people to stop hitting the curb?
That's doubtful.
That's doubtful.
I, I did get contacted by an engineering firm that is in the design phase for our northbound access to I-35. However, it is, what they are proposing and designing is not the finished build. It is a one-lane road that's, that's gonna go under the existing bridge, and then veer to the, to the north and be a, a left-side on-ramp to I-35E North. I don't have any more information than that. No signal yet, no final build yet. I don't know when it's gonna be, the final bill to be funded. However, they did tell me that, that this partial build is, is funded and could be as early as 2023, summer of 2023, to be constructed.
So no going north, coming back to get, going left to get on Highland Village Road?
No, you'll still have to use the Garden Ridge exit, or go up to, is it Hickory Creek, where the Texas U-turn is?
Right, yeah. And that's what I've been doing. It's so much easier, and it takes less traffic, you know, to go through the, the residential streets, and it's really quick, so. All right, well, I appreciate that.
Do we have a, since the chief is here, when's the next update we're gonna have on the license plate readers? I'm kinda, I'm curious how that's going.
You're learning. Mr. Lombardo, anytime the council wants an update through the agenda process, we can, we'll put it on the schedule and bring it to you.
I'm just curious to see how it's, the program's working.
Yeah.
And, I mean, because the, the first one we did was, was enlightening, I thought it was pretty cool.
I thought we set out a cadence.
I thought it was gonna be every?
Like every ninety?
Six months or something?
Six months would probably be fair judgment of the data, unless something unusual happened. So we're probably, what, four months out from the last one?
Okay.
Right in that range.
We are four months out, so like in the next, I want it before I go. I would like another report before I go, and that's May.
So the first meeting in May? Or before May? About April.
How about the last?
I think, I think we said six months, so probably due in March or, or April.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
So last meeting in April, then, how's that?
Last meeting in April.
Second meeting in April?
I think it, I think based on what Ms. Miller was saying, based on the calendar and the day of the election, my last meeting will be May the 7th, that I will be the mayor. And then the election will have taken place, no?
Be like May the 10th.
10th, okay. The election is on the 7th, but we can't call the election until so many days, and so she's coerced me into staying on the 10th. So last meeting in, in April.
Gotcha.
That would be awesome.
And then we might have some data to, well, I don't think our new cars will come in, but the package that was approved would, has vehicles in it that will, when they get here, will have license plate readers in them also. So we're, just can't wait to get those onboard and give you a report on that data, because they're linked with the flock cameras also, so.
Any update on those? On those vehicles?
That'd be Scott.
Nothing?
No.
Scott, they're controlling the, or have all the information on the vehicle status right now.
They're still in shipping containers in the middle of?
They're probably off the California coast.
Probably.
Waiting chips in a parking lot somewhere.
I remember that. Sitting in one of Mr. Lombardo's parking lots somewhere.
Yeah.
Seriously, we have approved the police vehicles, they are ordered, they're telling us almost a year turnaround, possibly.
How many, how many was that?
Wow.
Man, we ordered eight. I think, I think it was eight.
Okay.
Wow. Okay, well, I guess they'll be here when they get here.
Unfortunately.
Maybe.
Like everything else. All right, well, thank you, Scott. Chief, anybody else, council, does anybody else have anything? Okay, well, if not, then we are adjourned at 7:55.